All right, we'll call the November study session to order. Dr. Frederick could not be here tonight. If you'll please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our first post-election board session. We don't have to listen to any of that anymore. We're all grateful. We have several recognitions tonight, so let's start with those, and I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Ritter.
Yes, Dr. Harrell, please.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. Appreciate having the opportunity to visit with you again this evening. We do have three very impressive celebrations for this evening, and I'm anxious to get the opportunity to bring those to you. First tonight, we have Ms. Melanie Ward. Melanie is a Parkview student who has, who was recognized by the U.S. Army All-American Marching Band. And here this evening is Mr. Eric Ramsey, Principal of Parkview High School, to introduce folks involved in that event. So, Mr. Ramsey?
Good evening, and it is my privilege to be here tonight and to be from Parkview, where two students tonight being recognized are from. But Melanie Ward is one of our proud Vikings at Parkview and has done an exceptional job with our band program. But I won't speak about Melanie because I have my band director here, Mr. Curtis Tipton, who's gonna visit about her. So, Mr. Tipton.
Well, hi there. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and recognize our student Melanie. Melanie's been in the band for four years, and she's in the color guard. And they're kind of a unique part of the band because they're not actually playing instruments. They're spinning equipment, you might have seen them on the field, waving flags and dancing and all kinds of neat things. They add pageantry to the production, pretty cool. And Melanie's one of the finest I've ever had, and she's a great leader. She's a servant leader, I really like that. She's one of those that doesn't seek out recognition, she just wants to seek out others and help them. So, I was really glad that she got to have the opportunity to have this recognition. It's a really neat opportunity. The U.S. Army provides all of the airfare, the travel costs, all her lodging, her food, even her rehearsal clothes while she's there the whole time, and she pays nothing. So, it's a really fantastic opportunity. And it's the third one we've had from Parkview for the marching band, for All-American Marching Band. So, we're very, very pleased about that. And I think the fourth student in Springfield history, we had the Doral Green Beckham and then the three Parkview band students. So, pretty neat opportunity. So, thank you for, and this is Melanie and her family right here. I don't know if you want her to speak as well, but...
We would love to. If you could introduce your parents to us and then tell us, tell us where you'll be going.
My parents are Kelly and Elisa Ward. They'll be coming with me when I go down in January. Thank you for letting me come tonight. I'm really excited to go.
Where will you go?
I'm going to San Antonio in the Alamo Dome, I think.
Alamo Dome, yeah.
Yes, to perform during the halftime show of the All-American Bowl.
So, awesome, great.
Melanie, what was the process in being selected? How did that come about?
I had to be nominated by my band director. I got nominated back in March. Then I had to go through an audition process through like May in June, and I found out I made it in August. And in the audition process, I had to make a routine that was three minutes long with rifle, dance, and flag. And I had to explain why I wanted to be an All-American and what makes me a leader.
How many kids are chosen for this band?
There's a hundred students across the nation, and there were only two in Missouri, here in Ava High School. So, very neat opportunity for, for our school district and for Melanie, of course.
And what are your plans for next year?
I plan to go to college. This winter, I'll be in the MSU Color Guard. And next year, I'll hopefully be going to Cotty College in Nevada.
Good, awesome, good. Well, congratulations, and thanks for being here today.
Well, as I said, I have the privilege of recognizing two Parkview students. The second student is Sammy Gardner. Sammy, please stand up. And her parents are here, Christina and James, if they could stand up as well. I think it was two weekends ago that Sammy was recognized in Kansas City at the Certified Leaders Project Award for the Missouri PTA. And this is a distinct honor. It's the 97th Annual State Convention where they recognize a student from the state of Missouri, and Sammy received that. So, it's quite a, quite an honor.
Sandy, you wanna, come on up. And tell us what they reckon, what particularly that you were recognized for.
I was recognized for getting the Missouri PTA Leaders, Leadership Award. And basically, to earn that, I had to go, well, I went to the first convention, and you get a little slip of paper, and you have to get signatures on all of the workshops and stuff like that you go to. And whenever, over a span of two years, if you get a certain amount of signatures, you can earn the award.
Questions? And what year are you now?
What?
What grade, what year in school are you?
Oh, I'm a ninth grader. I'm a freshman.
Okay, very good. So, you'll keep it up, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations.
Sammy's mother has been on my parent advisory, and she's very, very active. If I may say that, did I say that right?
Yeah.
I, I, I understand, I understand, okay. By the way, here's an Ava alumni.
A little shout-out to the Bears.
Okay, there we go.
Well, thank you, Parkview High School, and Melanie and Sammy. We appreciate you being here. Tonight, we're also celebrating Pipkin Middle School. We have Mr. Tim Ziegler, Pipkin Principal. Tim, you wanna step up here? We're going to recognize some members of his staff, both teachers and teacher leaders. This particular team have presented at several levels and several events, and have actually earned numerous grants and awards or recognition in their presentation. Specifically, what we're speaking at this evening is the Association for Middle-Level Education, Teams That Make a Difference Award. This award is based on the work of fostering resiliency in at-risk students through Student Center practices and data-driven instruction. And so, here to visit a little bit with you on that is Mr. Ziegler, and he'll introduce those team of teachers.
We have the teachers come up, Roland Young and Jill Palmer, Jason Christman and Elizabeth Frex. They have received the award from the American Association for Middle-Level Education. That came with a $1,000 grant. They also had that grant matched by our local Hamels Foundation. And would you introduce, Kathy and...
Kelly and Kathy, can you guys come up, please?
The Hamels Foundation matched, so there's $2,000 there. The Hamels Foundation supports sustainable education projects that enhance learning for kids throughout the middle, throughout Ozark area. They're not just Springfield, they reach out. The Hamels Foundation is founded in 2008 by Heidi Strobel-Hammels, who's from Buffalo and also a graduate of Drury University. And her husband is Cole Hamels, I think he's a pitcher somewhere. Where is he? Oh, Philadelphia, that's right. He's a pitcher at Philadelphia. And their, I guess, motto or, "Education Matters." Education is the answer. They've helped schools at many locations. They also granted a thousand. They've also given Pipkin a couple other smaller grants, and that's turning out to be quite a relationship and very appreciative. The team has presented at national conference, the National At-Risk last year, and they'll present at National At-Risk Conference again in March. They're presenting at the DESI Conference, the Powerful Learning Conference in January of 2013 of this year. They've presented at P2G. He's presented at MSU and Drury, so really taking the at-risk program out. They've also received a grant from the foundation for about $1,100. So, those $3,000 go into six different classrooms that are at Pipkin, and they're all at-risk students in those classrooms. And they're reaching out in a variety of ways with that money to those six classrooms. I don't know, how many kids all total? Ninety? About ninety kids all total.
Any questions for the group?
Jason has his family and a new baby.
Oh, good.
Get many baby carts in our...
Thank you all very much. Good work, keep it up. Thank you, Dr. Harrell. Let's move on to the strategic discussion, and we'll let Mr. McKenna start off.
Thank you, Dr. Prater, and good evening, Dr. Ritter and members of the board. See if I can... You have to be smarter than the computer. Well, it's gotta be plugged in, that would be helpful. I'm telling you what, those graduate degrees are paying off left and right. Okay. So, I'm, it's my pleasure to just be with you tonight, after that rousing introduction, to be a part of your strategic discussion. And the board may recall from the Strategic Planning Retreat last year that a component of what administration walked away from was a directive to come back to the board with an update on how we select and recruit staff and how we answer the question of are we really getting the most qualified staff member every time we have a position available? Secondly, we know that there's been a lot of conversation recently at the state level about teacher and leader evaluation, and we've had a request from the board to provide an update tonight on that. We thought it might be helpful to kind of give you a little bit of a framework on how, at Springfield Public Schools, we are taking those types of processes and those types of components and really feeding them into a bigger, broader strategy to, to do several things. And so, we want to kind of give you a little bit of an overview tonight on that. What we call that bigger, broader strategy is talent management. This has been in the works for about the past year, and we've got a kind of a working definition that we use to guide our work in talent management. And that is a strategy that we use as an organization to attract, develop, and retain highly skilled staff for the purpose of meeting our current and future strategic objectives. All of that is a lot of words, when really what we mean is getting the best and keeping the best. At the end of the day, that's what we're really concerned about. Getting the best staff member for every, every possible opportunity that we have available and keeping that staff member, doing whatever we can to retain them. So, as we talk about the work of talent management and what we set out to do when we establish that framework, we had some targets, and here they are. First of all, we really knew that our work was gonna have to be driven by competency. We knew that it was gonna be critical if we were gonna evaluate people effectively or if we were gonna select and recruit people effectively. We had to know what we were looking for, what good looked like. And that's the competency model that we're talking about here. That needs to be based on our capability needs from a learning model standpoint and our future needs from a strategic planning standpoint. We knew that each applicant would need to undergo basic screening. We have about 11,000 applications come into Springfield Schools every year. And if we are gonna effectively wade through that number of applicants, we have to have enough data to do that so that we can ensure that we're trying to select the most appropriate people for interview. So, we knew we would need some more information there. We also knew that if we could prepare employees to be successful on day one and even engage them in our mission and vision prior to day one, that they stood a much more, more, better opportunity to be successful in the long term. And we stood to gain some efficiency from that as well. We knew that, again, performance had to be measured against those competency models. And we knew that we could develop a succession plan based on people who performed really well in their current roles and had the competencies and capabilities necessary to be leaders. And we really have not, as a system, done a great job as, at identifying those succession plans effectively and people who might be successful in those roles. And finally, we knew that we had to know how, what we were doing, and we needed some benchmarks for that. So, that would be staff engagement and satisfaction. And we're gonna talk more about that in a, in a moment. But we've really not, as a system, measured staff engagement and satisfaction across the board with all employee workforce segments. And that's something we knew we would need to do. We also knew we would have to trend that data and get something from it so that we could effectively plan for improvement. So, as we did that, we had to think about why the work was important. Just as a reminder, many of us know this, over 3,700 staff members in Springfield Schools, staff, staff member salary and benefits comprise over 80% of our operating budget, or nearly 80%, excuse me, of our operating budget. We all know this is the most important thing that we do as a system, hiring the best people for the work that needs to be done and, of course, the engine that drive our strategic initiatives. Currently, we have about 12% of our staff that are eligible for retirement, and over the next three years, we're gonna be nearing 30% of our staff eligible for retirement. So, that's a significant amount of knowledge walking out the door. What are we gonna do to, to backfill that knowledge and set ourselves up to be successful in the long term? And you may recall as well, the results of our review from the Missouri Quality Award Process and the Excellence in Missouri Foundation. We had some opportunity for improvement that was identified for us there relative to talent management, specifically those areas that I mentioned, succession planning and recruitment and selection. So, we set out with those targets. We set out with this need that we knew we had. And this is a picture of sort of where we are today. There are seven components of our talent management strategy today. We're gonna go in-depth to answer your questions about the state's model for evaluation in that center circle that you see. But for now, let me just briefly touch on the four phases in the outside of that circle, beginning with the recruitment and selection phase. We've already talked about the need there to have more data as a part of that process to effectively get through that number of applications. We've already talked about the need for that to be competency-based so that we know really what we're looking for. And we do have an action item later tonight that you'll hear that helps us learn more about that and hopefully get us some great information as a result of those processes. Again, the orientation and onboarding, knowing that we need to set people up for success prior to day one, and we need that process to be efficient. So, we knew that there would be some technology components there that we would need to integrate. The district's partnered with a vendor for that project, and we hope to go live just before the new year. But basically, that is a web-based portal people can access at any time, day or night, and it is tailored to them specifically. So, it's unique to their department that they're gonna work in. There's a video from their supervisor that walks them through the things they need to know prior to day one. On the other side of the circle, total rewards is a shift in our mentality, and the board's heard some discussion over the years, in getting people to think about their rewards in working for Springfield Schools outside of just their paycheck and their benefits. There are a lot of other reward systems and recognition systems that we have. Some of those we're working to make more robust, but there is a total picture we need to kind of make sure people are aware of, and that represents that shift in mentality that we hope to make. And finally, engagement and satisfaction. Everything is, is driving toward that goal of getting folks engaged and satisfied. So, if we go just a little bit deeper in that center circle there, we're looking at those three processes that we call the growth cycle. The state's evaluation model will fit in the red phase, which is the evaluation and performance management phase. Obviously, we know evaluation, traditional definition, to assess employees' performance. And from that, we want to get to competency. We want to get two, two things really, opportunities for improvement related to the competencies and what the employees are truly doing very well, their successes. Opportunities for improvement would feed into our growth planning phase where the idea there would be each employee would have a specific plan for them to improve their performance in their current role. And then, the successes, the things, things that they're doing well would serve two purposes. One, help us to identify mentors for staff. We know some of the best learning occurs when peers are sharing information shoulder to shoulder. And so, we hope that we could accomplish that in this phase as well. And secondly, from a succession planning standpoint, if we identify the competencies that we know leaders need to have, and we have some individuals who are fulfilling those competencies in their role that we highlight through our evaluation process, we might be able to have some succession planning that we could pull and extract from that. The other side over here, career goals. Another way that employees can get into that succession planning phase is by self-identifying. If we have a conversation with employees at the evaluation to say, "Where do you see yourself in five years as an employee of Springfield Schools? Where do you want to be?" And then, helping them through the growth planning again to set some plans to get there, to, to meet those competency needs that they have. All right, so talking specifically about the state's evaluation model, that red phase, and, and we really wanted to know where, as we looked at the state's model, where those processes would plug into our strategy in Springfield Schools. So, that's why we kind of have taken you through the conversation we just did. The state's model is rooted completely in growth, identifying where the employee currently is and where they want to go or where we'd like them to go based on the state's model. For each of the quality indicators of performance, and the, and we're gonna talk more about logistics in just a moment, but just to give you a frame of reference, teachers have 36 quality indicators in performance in the state's model evaluation. Each of those are viewed through the lenses of these three professional frames. And they're, they're structured that way for two purposes. One is to help employees know if they want to move to the next level of performance, what they should do or what their performance would need to look like at that next level. And secondly, for evaluators, to help evaluators recognize at which level the employee is currently performing. So, these three frames, we have professional commitment, professional practice, and professional impact. Commitment is really the employee's own commitment to their success in the future. Are they prepared? Have they got through the appropriate certificate programs, professional development, that kind of thing? Practice is putting it to work, evidence of their commitment in the work that they do or in the classroom. And professional impact is the outcome. It's potentially student achievement and that kind of thing. We're gonna talk more about student achievement here in just a moment, but it's, it's important to note that as Missouri applied for the No Child Left Behind waiver, many districts, many states throughout the nation indicated that they would dedicate a piece of their evaluation system to student achievement. A percentage of each teacher's evaluation would be reflective of their student's achievement. And in Missouri, that wasn't the case. We did not, Missouri did not actually highlight a specific percentage. In the state's framework for evaluation, student achievement and student performance is a component of evaluation, but it's one of nine essential principles. And it is not, there's no requirement to weight it at a certain percentage. Told you we'd talk more about logistics, and that's what this slide refers to. Again, teachers, nine standards, 36 quality indicators in the model. Principals have six standards and 13 quality indicators, and superintendents have seven standards and 16 quality indicators. Two things to note here, one, this is a model, and that's purely what it is. So, districts can adopt something different if they choose to do that as long as their model meets the nine principles that I just referenced a second ago, and we're gonna show you those in just a second. Secondly, what's important to realize is that the state recommends that although there are 36, for example, quality indicators for teachers, that we not look at any more than three of those and provide the teacher feedback on three of those in any one year. And again, the, the philosophy there is going for growth. They've, the research indicates that if we really drill down on three specific facets of performance, we'll get the most growth in the long term. This is an example of what the state refers to as a growth guide, and this is for one quality indicator. And this is just an example I selected for you. It's content knowledge and academic language. So, you see the, the columns that we have are the levels of performance, new, developing, proficient, and distinguished teacher. And then, the rows, starting with the second row down, are those three professional frames. So, for each of those level of perform, levels of performance, those are look-for's for the evaluator. This is what it should look like for a new teacher, a developing teacher, a proficient, proficient teacher related to commitment, practice, or impact. The top is a sort of all-encompassing statement on what an overall or overarching theme might be in that educator's performance. So, just putting to practice what I just mentioned a moment ago, if this indicator were selected as one of the three that the employee would be evaluated on in this specific year, this is one of the growth guides that would be scored. The way the scoring works, and I'm sorry, let me touch on timeline here quickly. I'm just, and this is small for you to read, but I wanted you to kind of get a sense of the rhythm that educators and leaders will get into. Beginning in August, we're gonna talk about the indicators that will be evaluated, selecting those three. Then going on to September, measuring baseline performance. Where is the current, employee's current level of performance? Which of those four indicators or performance levels are they currently at? Developing a growth plan to move them to the next level happens in October. And then, November to February is what we would call the formative phase now, gathering all that data to determine if that growth is occurring based on the growth guide or the growth plan that was developed. And then, by March 15th, we're measuring final score, which is the difference, of course, between the beginning of year and the progress that they made after the growth plan was implemented. So, kind of just going back to that scoring, this is just a visual example for you. The three indicators that would be selected there, we take the final score, subtract it from the base, we get the growth, and then, that's what goes into the employee's overall assessment. These last few slides I've mentioned to you, I've been using the teacher example, but they're the same for principals and for superintendents. The strategy related to growth and to scoring is, is the same for each of those. These are the principles I mentioned. So, if, if a district chooses to adopt something that is different from the model, they can do that as long as they meet these nine principles. You see clear expectations, that's identified in the growth guide. Differentiated levels of performance, those were the four levels that we saw. Have to have a probationary period, which is nothing new for us. Student performance measures. What they say there specifically is that the student performance measures must include multiple data sources. So, we don't want to just have one assessment or one test be the, the guiding factor there. And that it, it has to just be one of these eight principles that you see. Regular meaningful feedback is a part of the process. Training of evaluators, and then, the evaluation results have to be, have to inform another process, renewal or professional development, those types of things. And I would imagine that in Springfield Schools, based on the, the role that evaluation will play and the role we need it to play in our talent management strategy that you saw at the top of the presentation, we will probably adopt something that's slightly different or recommend for adoption, that's something that's a little different. And the goal there, again, is to tailor it to our needs specifically so that we can make sure that it works for us. So, next steps, we are currently in the process of piloting for the state the teacher evaluation instrument. We have several sites that have volunteered to be pilot sites for the, the instrument. We're actually selecting specific indicators so that we're not providing it, feedback on the entire tool, but just specific indicators. That will be happening now. It is happening now, and it will continue to happen over the next several months until we provide feedback to the state. We will develop our own instrument for adoption, which would incorporate what we learned in the pilot. We'll send that to our internal team. We have a team comprised of a cross-section of people from across the district that would help us to recommend something that works for Springfield Schools. And then, we'll have to figure out a way to support that. And that may be some technology, it may be a variety of processes on how we're actually gonna take what we've learned and put it to work in evaluation here. And then, we will focus on deployment. And the state's requirement for deployment is the 2015. So, we, we will have to have a process in place that meets those nine essential principles by that point. I mentioned a second ago, stakeholder input and stakeholder feedback. It's important to note that as the state has developed their model, there has been a significant amount of stakeholder input from across the state, teacher groups, administrator groups, school districts, professional development cohorts, all those kinds of things. Dr. Ritter, all those kinds of things. So, we've had a significant amount of feedback throughout the, the state as we've gotten feedback on the model. So, at this point, that's kind of the, the frame that we wanted to give you for the strategic discussion related to how Springfield Schools has kind of this overarching strategy and where evaluation and selection might fit within that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
This is just for certified staff.
The model that you saw is for certified staff, but we would, the, actually, the internal work team we have is developing similar framework for evaluation across the system for all teams.
But the state's only looking at certified staff, okay? When you look at three of 36, that was for teachers.
Right.
Who chooses the three?
It's up to the district. The state's given some examples there. Some examples they provided is some collaboration. So, maybe the district identifies one standard that teachers should focus on system-wide. Maybe that would be related to our learning model or strategic plan. The second one would be identified by maybe the building, so related to the school improvement plan perhaps. And the third might be identified by the teacher themselves. So, that's just an example, but it can be structured anyway.
So, these, okay, so they're not really individualized? Because if you had a teacher that you felt like there were three things and... I can see if we're... Because, I mean, I understand why you would do it that way, but to me, it's not individualizing it to get the most out of it as far as, but I understand why you'd do that. And then, what kind of train, because to me, all of this is whoever the evaluators are going to be is the key to this whole thing. Because you and I could both walk in there. If we're not trained the same way, we're not gonna see the same things or identify the same things. And I'm, I'm not, what a, eventually, I know that the state has some things, but I, I don't trust what they're, they would do on training. People come down and tell us how we ought to be evaluating these things. So, is that right? Really, how we train people so we'd get consistency with 50 schools? Everybody, every teacher's gonna be evaluated on the same one. We could have 50 different, some would be progressing, some would be perfect, if, if we're not training to look for a specific things which indicate that. Is that correct? And will we have our own training model so that whoever's gonna evaluate principals, you know, 30 some odd elementary people? Well, one person can't go out and evaluate... Well, one person can't go out and evaluate thirty people, so if you got, you know, or forty people, whatever you'd have. So how are we going to be consistent?
Well, first, first of all, let me just kind of comment for you on the three criteria, the three indicators you mentioned. As, as I've been to several meetings throughout the state where a representative from DESI has rolled this model out to an audience. And that is, that is often a sticking point for people in the audience. How can we effectively provide feedback when we're only looking at three indicators? So I, that is an example of a, of a facet of the model that each district may change and that Springfield Schools may adopt differently. Relative to training, interator reliability is what we're talking about there to make sure that there's consistent, you know, rating. And yeah, there'll have to be some significant training on that. A component that we've looked at that really helps, because another thing we have to keep in mind is this is a significant shift in mentality from where we've been to where we want to go with this growth model. So we recognize we're going to have to do quite a bit of training to get people to make that shift with us. But one example of something we've really worked to consider is, you know, demonstration. The use of videos, the use of, of live samples to help people in work teams to really rate what they see and then talk about the differences. And that's a model that's worked for us in a couple of other settings. Also, the technology that we would employ to help us with something like this. When someone sits down, a raider, an evaluator sits down to enter an evaluation in a, in a platform that would help them to compile the data together. There's a lot of resources in there that will help them look fours, listen fours. Did it, did it look like this, did the lesson feel this way? That would help them to guide their rating as well. So those are two kind of significant resources we think about.
Following up on, on that, who, have we identified who the, for example, of the classroom teacher, who would be doing the evaluation?
We have not addressed that question as it relates to the new, to the model. There is flexibility there, and there are, there are different schools of thought on what's the most effective approach. Currently, you know, there's collaboration between the classroom teacher and the principal in our current model. We would definitely incorporate at least an element of that.
And, and getting back to Bruce's point, I mean, I think it, it really does all hinge on that evaluation being effective and being objective and being accurate, I guess. And, and I know as a board member, we evaluate norm, and, and I look at all those things, and I say, well, I could go there, I could go there. It's just kind of this, you know, and so I, I wonder, you know, how we keep this from being just another piece of paper that principals, all their staff, and, and make it what we hope it's going to be, which is a very effective growth tool, as opposed to a, another thing that has to be, that has to be filled out.
And I, I think that if the district, if any district were to adopt the state's model, bring it into their, into their system and complete it, just, just wrote the way that it was, that that's definitely a risk that you would, that you would run. It's really all about what you do with it. It's about the so what. And so this is really our answer to that. If, if we know, or if employee knows, that this instrument is critical to their career planning and development, and this instrument is critical to providing them the right resources that they're going to need to take their career wherever they want to go, I, I think that's what, that's what makes it meaningful. It's about what you do with it. And so this is sort of how, how, being very explicit about how those pieces interlock together is our answer to that.
And then, and how closely have classroom teachers been involved in this process of how classroom teachers are going to be evaluated?
Well, with the state, I think they've been significantly involved through the representatives. But we have not made a decision yet on exactly, I mean, we're so early in the process that we've not made a decision on how any of that would work. Certainly, when we start gathering feedback from the pilot on just the state's model, and we start developing actually what's going to happen here, there will be classroom teachers representatives.
I know there's been some real good results from Montgomery County, and Maryland has a peer review model, I think, where master, master teachers, you know, evaluate and, and teachers. Well, but, 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 but I think we're all understanding, this is a key part of, you know, of, of retaining teachers and, and getting the best teachers and making the teachers that we have grow the way we want them to grow. I'd much rather put money in this than in, you know, somewhere else down the road when we've got a teacher that's not performing or, or... But, but certainly, my thought would be that we'd want our teachers as involved in this as possible, as early as possible, so that they understand what it looks like, what it feels like, what it looks like. And so everybody understands what the, where we're wanting them to go. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. And right now, the teacher involvement is at that pilot phase. So for buildings that have volunteered to take part in the, the pilot of the state's model, teachers will be providing feedback. That feedback will be pulled together, and then we'll make that a, move that into the bigger picture of what we're going to do system-wide.
This may be, obviously thinking way down the road, but I think about our data warehouse and how we focus in on our students' growth and measuring that. And if we were to, the data warehouse plus the employee growth model, eventually, could this lead us to the consideration of pay for performance with confidence?
So, and, and of course, that's such a much bigger discussion. But I think the crux of your question is, do we, are we being provided the data through these two avenues that would be necessary to build a foundation for pay for performance? And I think the answer is yes, that we would, we would be able to gather that data through these two channels if the district chose to implement something like that in the future, that we could do that successfully.
Are you thinking about a, a two-year cycle to implement, or to have enough data to implement this, or?
For the evaluation instrument? Well, that, that will be, it will have to be implemented by twenty fifteen to meet the state's requirement. So we'll be going through several iterations of, of drafts with staff input prior to that point.
A couple of points. If we change the model, does that have to be approved by anyone? Or how do we, you know, how do we prove that we have an effective model?
At this point, the only requirement is that we sign and a, we attest to the fact that we are meeting those essential principles by twenty fifteen. And I, I will say that one other thing, that the state will collect evaluation data through the core data reporting system, and they've started doing that already. And they'll, they'll want to compare the district's level of performance under its previous evaluation system to its level of performance under the new evaluation system to see what trends might be there.
Okay, and then, this may have been implied, but just not stated, but you talked about the steps to implementation, but there wasn't any mention that the board would approve this instrument? Is that just a given?
Yeah, well, I, that'll be something that Dr. Ritter will have to have a conversation with the board about, and exactly what steps that you'll want in terms of involvement and approval, and that would be something I would, I would turn to him to answer.
Well, I guess from my personal perspective, we have a lot of authority. I mean, we approve hires, we, you know, we approve terminations. We do a lot of that type of personnel work. So I guess, at least personally, I think it should come before us. I mean, I think it's an important enough document, and there's enough interest. You know, I also think there may be some value in having board representation on that district team that's going to develop, you know, develop Springfield's model. You know, that may be a way to, to get that. I, I don't know, but I think, I think we have enough interest in what happens to our employees and have enough legal authority in terms of being the employer that, and the ultimate juror and judge, really, in employment disputes, that I think that that would be important. I guess the other thing is minor, but the four definitions, new, developing, proficient, and distinguished, the new seems to be kind of an outlier there in terms of the, the way it's labeled. Because new indicates, to me, a period of time. And, you know, unfortunately, we could have twenty, twenty-year-old veterans that may not be, you know, demonstrating what's in that new column. So I guess just, that's just one thing that stuck out to me, that it seems like there might be a better terminology there if we're talking about progressing along a competency.
And, and I don't think it's minor, actually. If, if I were to identify the two most common concerns that are raised in the presentations I've heard by the state, the first one is the one that Mr. Ritter picked up on, the three criteria per year, and the second one is that. That there's, there's some disconnect there. And, you know, that's, again, it's something that we might consider adjusting to meet our needs a little better.
In our system, it's called not yet. So, the rest of it fits, but that, not yet.
It's, and I would agree with Ms. Callen about, I think the board ought to have some framework discussion about the framework itself. I think that's a good point.
The only concern I have there is, yeah, I think so, but there needs to be flexibility by site, et cetera. So we have to put the flexibility in the board approval, so.
The, the three indicators, which I've heard a whole lot about too, I couldn't remember, is that a minimum? Or was that a set level?
It's a, it's a recommendation in order to get the most growth. And so the questions I've heard are, you know, if a teacher is struggling, for example, in other indicators, can we add a fourth or a fifth? And, you know, yes, you can do really just a model.
That you can't do more than a fourth, that's what I thought. If we do our own model, and I'm not sure about the timeline, the annual, i- is that flexible from a timeline standpoint? That we can do site-specific, or do you have to stick with the same timeline that DESI proposed in her pilot?
Nope, we, we can adjust that as well. Yeah, I, I would think that we'd want to have something consistent across our system, so that we can make sure to follow up on the timeline. But as far as what we adopt, it can be flexible.
Yeah, well, I, and I'm hoping that since this is just a model that, and I'm glad we're a pilot, that we can learn from, that's these mistakes, so to speak. Their, their model program to help develop ours to be more effective, and, because I think we can do it, more effective, putting that together. But I am, am concerned about the training. And that's not just here. That's statewide issue, that there's a real concern about how do we train these evaluators and get them as much on the same page as you can be without being rote, robots to do that. And you don't want to do that either, but there's, there's a whole lot of fear right at the moment out there, on both sides, I think. So, I, I think it's a good start, you know. Hopefully, we'll get there with something very, very productive by fifth, which I think we will, I'm not worried about that, but... But I think it's a good opportunity for districts to, to look at the model and learn from that and go off and do their own thing that meets the requirements of, of what DESI's looking for.
That, that would be our, our goal.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yep. I think we can do it better too, by the way.
I don't think, I know.
I think the bottom line, by the way, you're going to hear this quite a bit, is proficiency. And we're probably going to become what we may, I don't know if it's going to be true or not, become a proficiency system. In other words, student proficiency, adult proficiency, all about learning, improvement, and so it aligns well with continuous improvement. And, and, but the, the real, the bottom line, though, of course, is consistency, and also being flexible within that consistency. So that's critical. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good. Dr. Ritter, you'll talk about our legislative priorities.
Now, we, you know, we get a chance to be political here, coming off of the elections, et cetera. So in front of you, you should have the proposed legislative priorities. And if I may explain, basically, these priorities came from a discussion, myself, Dr. Prater, and Chris Callen, along with cabinet's discussion. And you'll see that it's pretty targeted, and it's very, very simple, and very, very, very much, very direct compared to last year's. Last year's had more language to it. The thing that I want to also address is that the Missouri Vision Project, I'm just bringing that to everybody's attention, has something that Missouri School Board Association, as well as the Missouri Association of School Administrators, put together with many superintendents as well as board members. And so the language, and so what you're going to see here, that supports the Vision Project, and the Vision Project supports these initiatives. Last Thursday, or Wednesday, what was that, Dr. Prater and Mrs. Callen? Was it Wednesday? I think it was Wednesday. We were at a regional meeting for school boards.
On Thursday.
It was Thursday, yeah. We were at a regional meeting for school boards, and a lot of focus on the tax credit reform. I just want everybody to know that we did invite Jim Anderson to come, December eleventh, and he will be here to have a conversation with the board, because he sits on the review commission, tax, tax credit reform review commission. I think it's the name, but something like that. Anyway, he will be here, and we'll have a conversation, become more aware and more familiar with. And I, I think there's some things that I would call literally shocking, that we're going to be coming up with and, and understanding. So that's there. And then the other, the other initiatives really are consistent with our priorities that we had in previous years. I mean, last year, with the finance piece, of course, and that is to fully fund the formula, but also opposing any unfunded or underfunded mandates. And I think that the DESI has taken that seriously, by the way. They are looking for ways to pull mandates out of, out of our way, which is good. And so I think we need to continue to support that. Under governance, of course, it's all about local control. And of course, we have been very clear in proclaiming that in our work with the, with the House, Senate, as well as the governor's office. And so the, we're continuing to, as far as Springfield Public Schools, supporting charter schools that are accountable to their local school board. And of course, that is, of course, what we would like to see. And I think we're, we're going to find some movement towards that, more and more towards that in the, in the, in the legislation this year because of the failure, major failure of, and Jerry, you were for the part of that meeting, is with St. Louis, Kansas City, major failure of charter schools. Very, it's really hurting kids. And so I, I do feel we're going to see some, some, some adjustments there. We'll wait and see there. As far as accountability, the IMSA five, we're making a statement that we support. The efforts around IMSA five, we do sense, Mr. Lee and I feel that pressure, do sense there is some push against IMSA five. And it's, it's basically a top ten by twenty, but there's other things that there, there's concern about. We, we are taking the position that we do support IMSA five and see it as a target, but not telling, telling us how to do things, but what we need to accomplish. And then the, you'll see, the encourages DESI and legislation to describe what the child should learn and allow this local district to determine how. And that's really just reiterating what I just said about IMSA five. And really, when we talk about legislation, that's where we have a problem with the legislature telling us what percentage or how we're going to incentivize teacher, for instance, teachers, for instance, okay? And so that, to me, is a, is a major concern. Then, early childhood, I just want to mention to the board, we do have a community that really would like to push, and I do think this needs to be a community initiative as much, if not more than our initiative, because we have K, K twelve. And I do feel that there's, there is a community initiative or a community momentum that's building around pushing for early childhood in this community. A little bit on the state level, but not much. I don't think it's affordable, although, Mrs. Callen, you were there the other night, other day with Mr. Hirschen, and he was talking about making that a priority for the State Board of Education as well, if you remember that, so.
Right, but only after the formula is fully funded. I think that's a real big distinction there.
Yes, and that's the bottom line, of course. What are we down, six hundred million dollars, I think, with the formula?
Yeah, about as much as the tax credits that we're dealing with.
Yeah, we'll find that out. So that, it's really, I think that's it in a nutshell, and, and so I, if there's anything else, or if there's something you're uncomfortable with in these, this list, let's talk about it tonight, because I'd like to bring them for approval on the twenty-seventh. And then, of course, we will visit with our legislators. We need to check, by the way, to make sure that's still a time we can meet. That's going to be on the twenty-ninth, we're going to be meeting. We sent out the invitation, and so, and we're getting responses back, and we have one so far. Anyway, so I'd like to be able to present, mail this to them, subject to board approval. And then, then we have board approval on the twenty-seventh, so.
Could we mail them a copy of the Vision Project to along with this, I think?
That's a good idea, yeah.
Any comments, revisions, suggestions?
Where, where's the data on the charter schools that are?
It's, well, I'm just going to quote what I've heard, but it, the, DESI does have the data. We can go to DESI's website and get the data on charter schools.
Well, it would seem that would be good information for them to also have.
Well, it would seem that would be good information for them to also have, because we continue to hear them talk about charter schools and actually promote. And if the data is there and it's hard data, I think it just gives us a stronger, other than it's our opinion.
Yeah, the data's there, I just, I have to get it.
Yeah.
I don't, I haven't seen, I don't recall that I've seen immediate last years, but I've seen it up to, and it's, it's startling and it's good information that we need to have.
I think the, the real data will be, we can go to the state board meeting in June, where they had to close, I can't think of the, Imagination?
Imagine.
Yeah, Imagine. And 3,500 students basically learned nothing. In fact, they regressed in their learning when that charter was open. And, and so now, they had to close them and they, they're absorbed now into the St. Louis District. And I think St. Louis now is the largest district because of that, but anyway.
But there's even more data, because I know Peter Hershen.
Oh, yeah, there is.
Quoted it at our meeting last week. And there's only like five charter schools in all of St. Louis that are performing better than the average.
Outside of Kip, not many of them are performing.
Right.
And there's a couple.
I mean, I think having just numbers, I think you're right, just having numbers and having a pretty, you know, very snapshot would be helpful.
That is available. And I, Krista, you've seen some of that.
I know, in fact, Krista Castro, the commissioner, and I've had conversations, she has data. And so, it's frustrating, so. And really, I, I do want to be defending charter schools a little bit too. I do think that charter schools well-managed and with good accountability will do a good job. And of course, I think MSBA is looking to even provide some training for charter school boards. And so, I, I do think if we had something like that in place, it would be, it would be a benefit. But either way, it still is not something that's going, we can say that that's the answer to improvement, so.
Well, it goes all back to the management of the school, I mean, just like it does to any public school. It's the board, it's the principal, it's the leadership, it's the site leadership, it's the quality of the teacher in the classroom. I mean, it's really not rocket science, you know, I mean.
Governance.
It's governance, it's the way something's governed or, or, or paid for. But, you know, I think that's why MSBA has gone to the stance that they have, is because we know that a well-trained school board has a positive impact on what happens to, to students, so.
The accountability back upstream.
One thing we were really careful of in Colorado Springs, and we had seven charters, and most, six of those seven were basically alternative, innovative type of charters. But we were, we were very careful to make sure there was no segregation going on. And what you, what you're finding a little bit in Kansas City and St. Louis, this is coming from the superintendents and board presidents, there's quite a bit of segregation going on. And it's selecting self-selected, but also selecting talented kids.
And it gets down to the motivation of why the charter schools are there, and most of them are to generate revenue.
Right.
As opposed to generating high achieving students.
Anyway.
And that's part of the focus of governance that is a real issue that, that you see.
So, we'll get that data.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else needs to be added to the priorities, you think? Anything needs to be taken away? I think these are short, easy for them to focus on.
I, I really like the priority, I really appreciate the accountability one about working with Desi and the legislature about just tell us what we need to do and let us do it. They need to hear that over and over and over again. Maybe talking to the wall, but I mean, I just think it needs to, it's really important.
We do know that the House leadership is going to be focused heavily on charters and vouchers and so, and tax credits. In fact, one of the, one of the House leaders, as a conflict of interest, that's from my perspective, as far as tax, tax credits, so, either way, we don't need to go there. If this is okay, then I will go ahead and, we will approve this then at our, our meeting on the 27th.
And I think you'll probably need to get it to them in advance of our approval, so.
Yeah, I think we already did, didn't we?
Okay, good.
We already sent it to them.
Perfect, thanks. All right.
Sorry to make an assumption there.
Good, I think that's a good assumption. No comments from the public, I don't believe. So, let's go on, we've got a lot of information still to receive, smart board update.
Good evening. In August 2009, and she works to make sure she's smarter than the technology.
This is Marty Moore, by the way, so everybody knows.
Administrators came before the board requesting a portion of the bond money be used to put interactive smart boards and projectors in all of the classrooms across the district. You've had regular updates all along in terms of the project status and completion rate. What tonight's information item does is give you a sense of what happens in the classrooms. And I really want you to see the connection to where we're going with SP5 with student preparation and teacher support. I want you to see the cross-functional team that put this support plan together and get to see what it looks like up front, up close and personal in a school.
Smart boards in the classes help students pay attention better and interact more with the lesson. And it helps them get involved with it so they'll want to learn.
If you just look at the word in a book, you just, you staring at it and just, it helps your brain because I had that video.
I think, you know, prior to smart boards, they, they were just using Elmo's and those kinds of tools to project things. And it wasn't really active engagement for our students, but the use of smart boards has really added that element where students feel like they're active participants.
Well, I would prefer the smart board because you can do more things on it, like make, the teacher can talk to and write down things on a smart board. So, like if you have to do notes, you, you can see them better.
Well, it helps me learn more because I think I'm more of visual or like, can stay grounded, so I'm like, I like to be in and be active, sensitive and I see more.
You're actually able to get up and move around instead of sitting in your seat, working on a worksheet or something like that. You're able to get up and write down your answer. I know the kids have a lot of fun with that. It helps students see that it's okay to get in front of people, and it's okay sometimes if you get things wrong. Ask our kid up here, and can you circle what would be a friendly number for 28? If I wanted to estimate 28, how to circle a number that would be a friendly number for 28? Raise your hand if you can tell me one. There is not a day that I go into a classroom, the smart board is on, and I just see a sea of hands, oh, pick me, pick me, pick me. The kids absolutely love when the smart boards are being used.
I think that the teachers are using it as another available strategy and one that they recognize has got an advantage for kids and that it gets kids involved. So, the teachers can get kids actually doing it and they're, they, the teachers are spending less time just standing up front talking.
These are mostly for my students, especially at the beginning and ending of units, where I have the what and the why, and we really want them to kind of interact with those objectives instead of just seeing them up on the board and me talking about them every day. I really don't know that I do learn many lessons without this technology now, because I can use it for presenting spelling words, I can use it for teaching math lessons, I can use it to have my kids sign in for making their lunch choices. So, it's a regular part of every part of my school day.
Can we check KY3 and see what we, what the temperature's going to be? So, what would the high be today? And the low? Okay, can you write the high for 74 and the low 34?
Both the onsite training and also the atomic learning training were highly supportive for teachers. The onsite gave everybody just that bigger picture of what smart board usage really looked like in a classroom, but then they were able to individualize that whenever they were doing their own pieces of training on atomic learning. The additional training that we had, that we did at the computer, I was really surprised that it was a refresher for some things that I had forgotten. And then there was some additional information, I didn't realize I could do this with this product. Well, I mean, how to use all the different things right there is so much more valuable than, than saying, here's your smart board, this is what you guys are going to do. So, having the levels of training definitely was beneficial. They also showed us in the training where to find materials that were already out there. And that was great, because as teachers, we all know that we like to share information and there's a lot of good things out there. Smart board's way better because the whole class is participating and everything, the teacher's also talking.
Well, I like that Miss Bogan, she helps us have fun with it and she lets us touch the smart board.
It's a little cardboard, it's like, it's like it's a happier environment.
Because it gives you, it's more fun.
What questions can I answer?
Callen.
Is this on our website?
It can be.
Okay, I think that would be a really nice thing to be able to direct our voters to. That's the other thing I would ask, because I probably would be one of these teachers, but I know that there are probably some teachers that really took to this technology and have really integrated it, and there are probably others that maybe are still feeling less comfortable. Is there ongoing training, ongoing support for people that kind of self-identify as still needing that kind of?
The approach through EdTech has been to first do the atomic learning, where you can do it online, computer, and then that face-to-face support. And they offer a series of monthly trainings that are made available, principals know through the operations, weekly updates. And he, Dave Duff sends out a weekly kind of brief of here's kind of coming attractions. So, there's always ongoing support and that's, that piece of professional learning has a deep history in Springfield Public Schools.
And is there an expectation that our classroom teachers would use, I mean, how much of an expectation is it that this tool will be part of their instruction?
Well, two things I think happened that were part of the foundation of the rollout of the smart board, is that part of the expectation was after you went to the training, you kind of got checked off to make sure that you understood it and that you were implementing it in your classroom. And that data's available on the IT website, so you see the schools that participated in that training. The second piece is, and several of the teachers speak to that, originally, they thought, oh, I might just use it for the one thing. Over time, in those classrooms, you dabble with it a little bit and it becomes a bigger piece of the classroom, and they start to generate more ideas. And every time you kind of break down a wall in your understanding, and I, I can even speak to that personally, I was very reluctant early on with the smart board, because if you touch it anywhere, it starts jumping somewhere. I am not of that age, you might be able to tell that by looking at me, that would, would see that as a friendly device. But once you see what the possibilities are and all the things, almost virtual field trips and experiences that it brings into the classroom and the resources that are available that can be used, I think teachers start to, to get a taste of what the possibilities are in the classroom. I think the other thing, and that you saw in the video, that teachers see up close, is the engagement with the students. And, and that's why we went into education. We wanted to see that spark in a student's eye, we wanted to engage them on content that really mattered to us as educators and instill that love of learning. And that's what I see when I'm in those classrooms. It's one vehicle, there are lots of vehicles, but it is a vehicle, and it's an important one for lots of kids.
The thing that I noticed was an autistic child at Delaware. Very quiet, just sitting there, rolled him up in a wheelchair, rolled him up to the smart board and boom, totally just exploded. And so, it's amazing what happened there. And I think that, you know, when they talk about visual learners, we have quite a few visual learners, and I think the smart board helps us with that, so.
I think this information is important to get out to our voters. They can see a new school building, they can see lights or bleachers on the stadium, but they don't see this. And just like the city puts those, you know, completed as promised signs around on the new intersections.
Good idea. Your tax dollars at work and the kids.
Absolutely, so, so that's a great idea. Thank you very much. While you're up there, why don't you tell us about e-learning?
I'd be happy to do that, and it's a purposeful segue.
Yeah.
One of the things that the board approved in June of this past year was an opportunity for Springfield, Springfield Public Schools to enter the e-learning arena. Funding was provided to hire an e-learning coordinator and an instructional developer, along with the related resources to design and initiate the development of robust adult and student e-learning systems. As Dr. Hagerman and her staff have worked to make this a reality, we have all discovered that there are many definitions across the district for e-learning as a concept. And as we move forward, it's really important for the board, for the community at large to understand what we mean in Springfield Public Schools by high-quality, robust e-learning for adults and for students. And so, their presentation tonight will clarify what that looks like when we talk about e-learning in Springfield Public Schools. And I'd like you to notice the connections to our own Springfield learning model, because it's going to incorporate a lot of those different pieces.
Dr. Hagerman and Nicole Lemon.
The Smartboard project is such an exciting reminder of the great work that can happen. When we work together as a team, we communicate clearly and we support teachers. And we're so excited to use those same principles in this next exciting adventure for our school district to develop e-learning. Online learning is everywhere, just about every sector of the economy uses online learning. In 2000, roughly 45,000 K-12 students took an online course. In 2009, more than 3 million K-12 students took an online course.
There is estimated to be a 342% growth in K-12 students moving to district-led online learning over the next five years. 94% of freshmen entering college in 2014 and beyond will be expected to participate in online learning. Many, if not most of these students will not have taken an online class in high school.
We've heard your concerns. We know the perceptions about online learning. We know that every single one of us has probably had a personal experience with bad online learning. We know that we've seen those amateur audio recordings played behind slides.
The diary of Anne Frank, background information, part three. At approximately 10:00 AM, August 4, 1944, the Frank's family's greatest fear came true.
Some e-learning requires students to access information from a teacher that they never see and just complete random tasks in isolation, but we know that there's a better way.
Quality e-learning recognizes what we know to be true about teaching and learning, that the teacher is the most critical element to the student's success. In quality e-learning, the teacher engages students through video, online resources, applets and interactive learning objects.
Hi, class. I really enjoyed the discussion boards last night and reading about how much you're learning on our unit on fear. I think that based on your feedback, the best thing for us to do would be to take a field trip. Unfortunately, I don't think that we can all hop on a plane together, but I do know a way that we can travel. Jimmy brought up an excellent point last night about how the Holocaust and its victims were the ultimate example of fear's impact on society. I've located a virtual field trip on Anne Frank's hiding place. I've put the link on our module and I want for you to watch the video, but beforehand, I want to take you through step-by-step on how to navigate through this particular application. Now, you want to be sure and have your volume turned on so that you can hear the stories. You'll use your mouse to move around the different parts of the house. When you see the icon, that's the golden parentheses with the dot, that tells you that that's another place that you can go to. So, as I click on that, it will open up the bookcase, we'll travel through the hallway, we can go through the door, past the staircase and into the room where the Frank family stayed. Once you're in there, and all along, you'll see different areas where you can click to hear different stories. But this is what it would look like when Anne Frank lived there. And we can hear a little bit, I'm going to turn this on so you can just get a glimpse of what this is like.
We've seen learning management systems that contain endless lists of Word documents, folders and tasks, as if learning were as simple as just making your way through a checklist of readings, but we know there's a better way.
Quality e-learning fosters person-centered relationships through the use of videos, discussion boards, collaborative projects and authentic personalized feedback. Learning management systems no longer have to be just a place where Word documents sit and students and teachers pass them back and forth.
In this example, you can see how a teacher can interact with a student's assignment, provide personalized feedback. provide personalized feedback using the tools built into the system. The teacher has access to a rubric that aligns to Common Course Date Standards and with easy navigation can provide students with timely feedback. But feedback doesn't just have to be written and can be personalized for each student using easy video tools.
Mike, great story. You had me rolling on the ground laughing. Love the details. I hope your wife was your first kiss. If not, I hope she never reads this story. Good work.
The best part is students can send a message back to the teacher, creating a two-way dialogue, developing those person-centered relationships.
Hi, Mrs. Larson. Thank you for your feedback on my assignment. I appreciate it. I'll try to make a few small changes and send it back in to you. Thanks.
Study groups can be set up and live video conferencing can support students who may need additional help or who are working on a project together.
We've seen online learning that looks like a worksheet warehouse where students feel there's no one there to help them. They're bored and they're left to figure out the disjointed lessons on their own. Learning is passive, but there's a better way.
Quality e-learning is fun and interactive. It's based on rigorous and relevant curriculum that engages today's learners with today's technology. So what you see before you hear is an online frog dissection. The student actually has to pick up the scalpel, the student has to cut through the frog, just like they would in a biology class. The student has to then pull back the skin of the frog to reveal the organs of the frog. Has to select the pins and properly place them. The neat thing about these interactive online tools is that the student can't go forward if they're not doing it correctly. So you actually have to put the pin in the right place. You notice at the bottom, it tells you to locate and press on the thorax. Well, it took a while to figure out where the thorax was and once you locate it, then it lets you move forward and actually cut through it and press. And then you have to select the tool and continue with the dissection.
As you can see from the examples we've provided, a quality e-learning experience is a quality educational experience. In your documents, further information on the Community of Inquiry model developed by Randy Garrison. Students in quality e-learning experiences will have a quality social presence, a cognitive presence, and a teaching presence.
We know Kodak, one of the most innovative and recognizable American brands. At one time, Kodak cameras and film could be found in every store and was the go-to brand for photography. So what happened to Kodak? Kodak is bankrupt, a failure. Some may blame digital technology, but did you know that Kodak actually held the patents for digital photography? They had the employees who created the technology to sustain their company into the future. But what happened? They sold it away. They let their patent for digital photography, their guarantee for future sustainability, go to other companies, their competitors.
This is the position that educators are facing all across America right now. Online courses are the future, we know they are, but we have the curriculum, we have the employees, we have the customers, and we have a choice. Are we going to let universities and other vendors take our customers, like states all across the country have, or will we learn from Kodak? Thankfully, Springfield Public Schools has chosen to create online courses rather than purchase from vendors. This allows us to align to the learning model, promote communication from teacher to student and student to teacher, and embed high-quality, interactive experiences like the ones that we've shown you tonight. It allows us to maintain control over the quality of education that we provide to our students and it allows us to keep our own teachers teaching them.
Since July, we have begun the exciting work of introducing e-learning to Springfield Public Schools. We have created an advisory team that represents all five high schools, professional learning, information technology, education technology, special services, counseling, and curriculum.
We've developed a student course creation process and a professional learning, learning module creation process that can be found in your documents. These processes were jointly approved by Educational Services and Operations.
The first two professional learning modules were developed for year-two step-up teachers and made available at the start of second quarter. We are beginning to collect data now and are proud to report that 100% of those who have taken the online module not only believe it was an effective and efficient use of their time, but also believe they achieved the learning goals and success criteria. Validation of this learning will be made firsthand in the face-to-face meeting with our step-up coach, making this a truly blended learning experience.
We're currently working on a course that will be piloted this January. The first course we are offering is physical fitness. This is based off of three criteria for course selection. First, classes that students were already purchasing from outside vendors. Second, helping to relieve summer school overcrowding. And third, a graduation requirement. The first course will be available to 20 students at the start of second semester. As you'll remember, this video inspired and guided our work as we started to think about 21st century key capabilities and learning model development. Our goal is for this video to continue to inspire us as we begin another step into the world of online learning.
We are living in exponential times and we aren't preparing students for our future. We are preparing them for their future.
And we want our students to be ready. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I just have a suggestion. I noticed that the advisory team is all internal people and I wonder if, as we try to make sure that our patrons understand the value of this kind of instruction, if there'd be some value of adding parents or, you know, some PTA reps or some?
Future employers.
Yeah, or, yeah, or people from the business community. I mean, it seems very internally focused, so that was just an observation I had seen, but good work.
Actually, I have several. Well, thank you, that's really kind of exciting. It's very exciting.
Good.
And I guess a couple of thoughts I'd have, one, or some thoughts you've given. I'm really glad to hear that you got one in January. That's the online class that my kids took was physical fitness and it was terrible. So I know this one will be much, much better. But it's, it's also, I think there's an opportunity for us to be able to offer not only what we're doing to our own students, but we have an opportunity to offer it to students statewide. So that somebody, we have a class in Springfield on Mandarin Chinese, I don't know, that we could offer that to students in Park Hill and North Kansas City and Lindbergh or whomever. And it'd be a real opportunity to, to utilize not only our staff and resources and expertise, but accomplish, and it goes both ways to some degree, to do that. So I, I think it's a great opportunity as we develop courses to be able to offer those statewide and I can get greedy, it can generate revenue if you do that. So that's an opportunity. I really like the idea that it's teacher-driven. I really think that is the key to the whole thing because a lot of people's concept of e-learning is sit here, answer the questions, read your, read it, answer it, done, no feedback, no dialogue, no collaboration, no anything. And I really appreciate the approach you're taking with respect to teachers, the critical component in this whole process and it's not a, let's see how fast we can learn this and get through it and get done and we can be done. I, I appreciate that. Two things that, that I guess can, not, one, one concern I've got, let me go to the other one, this other one. Have you considered, and this is a board question, I would like to see us consider requiring online classes to graduate. Kids taking, because of the startling statistic that you brought up of 94% of the kids are gonna take online classes when they get in college and we only do about 5% have ever taken one. And I'm not saying you start big, but I'm just saying, I, I think at some point we need to have the discussion that we require students to take a couple of classes online to graduate. I know there's several schools that do that. And I think that's, I mean, that's a strategic discussion for us to have. I, I think would be a good one to have. One of the concerns I have is, is a state requirement that's out there that basically says we don't get attendance for a student who takes an online class. We get 94% of an attendance to take an online class, which penalizes us for offering online classes, which is archaic. And hopefully that can be changed at some point and that discussion will occur, but you know, when, when you require 95% attendance for A+ and we only get 94 just because they took an online class, I mean, it's all backwards. And so Desi's gonna have to get into the 21st century on, online learning. And I know they're hearing it a lot and hopefully there'll be an opportunity to do that, but I, I am really excited about this, what you're doing. I, I, there's just so much discussion statewide about e-learning and online learning and I know MSBA's really moving fast with, with their project too, so I'm excited about the opportunity and you guys have done a great job putting this together and I look forward to a lot more classes besides just physical fitness being on there.
Ms. Chasman?
I didn't know that about, about that. Have we not gotten the same amount of money for online?
Nope.
Has there been thought to, to utilizing this? And I know we've talked before about advanced placement and, and to, to utilize that intra-district so that, so that more students can take advantage of that across the different high schools? Is that something that is on the back burner somewhere?
I think that when we think about the student courses we're going to offer, we have the short-term answer and the long-term answer. And so where we are right now was in thinking of what we've sort of termed our entry point. And so you'll see some school districts, especially small ones, say that their entry point is expand AP or their entry point might be catch kids who are about to drop out. And where we felt like, through a lot of interdepartmental conversations, our entry point was, is in this realm of these three areas of courses we know that kids are already getting from outside vendors that may or probably may not meet our quality that we expect. We have this summer school issue and it'd be helpful if it was a graduation requirement. So that's kind of what we have chosen collaboratively as our entry point, but that's certainly not the limits of what this can offer. That's just sort of where we're starting and I think that AP is a really interesting direction to look in.
And then the other thing that, wanted to know whether that's, whether it's also being thought about and that is bringing it down from the high school level down into, I mean, because I see this as a way to enhance, you know, math instruction for an advanced third grader that is already doing advanced math and, and needs something that challenges him or her. That, whether that can be done to differentiate that instruction in a more cost-effective way that's, that is more engaging for the student.
I think that's certainly a long-term possibility and the other piece that's really exciting just in our beginnings with this physical fitness course is the opportunity for when these course designers are creating the online version, they're finding all of these really interesting, interactive activities that can be done in the classroom as well and they're already finding ways to take the e-learning construct and push it into the face-to-face classes and actually change some of the instruction that's happening there. So you're sort of grabbing those kids even who aren't enrolled in it and improving that way.
Have we figured out the compensation around this with teachers doing an online course and how that, that compensation works and what?
What we have, I'll, I'll use exactly what you said was figured out. We have figured out what we're going to do for the pilot. And from there, I think we have a longer-term discussion of how is this really going to be a viable part of our system. We know how other school districts are operating. Most of them have tried it one way and then switched to a different way and it's, it's different everywhere you look. So we are going to have to figure out long-term how we're going to sustain that.
Talk a little bit about your time, timeline.
January, students enrolled in physical fitness. We want to expand, we're thinking to about three sections of physical fitness to help out summer school. We hope to create one or two more courses this spring to launch a new course in summer school. And from there, what it basically becomes is a mathematical equation because from the pilot, we'll know exactly how much it costs to create and teach an online course and then it'll just become a part of a budget conversation where basically you'll tell us how many you want us to kick out in a semester by?
I think our enrollment's gonna go up sizably because of homeschool and we're gonna have to figure that out as well.
Just as a former, former physical educator, I'm really excited that you're doing this and I'm, I'm going to assume that maybe the target went there because it, it was the dreaded requirement to get out of the way?
I feel like it went there because we know a lot of kids are purchasing it and we know what they're doing in their purchase course and there is really exciting stuff out there that you can do with it. Think heart rate monitor with a USB where you can plug in and track, create physical fitness plans, collaborate.
Yes, but with, with an instructor.
Right.
That's good.
This could really go, yeah.
Well, I like, there's lots of neat apps that you can use on your phone to track your exercise and then download it to your teacher. So yesterday I worked with the PE coaches to start to, to develop it and they are very, very excited about what it'll look like, so.
Where are they purchasing this?
High school kids buy it online.
University of Missouri.
University of Missouri does it, yeah.
Buy it online and you get credit?
Right.
We give them credit for it?
Right. I like the, I like the frog bit, but we can get you an eye surgery.
Hoping that I, and that's one question, I don't know if this is for you or for Dr. Ritter or somebody else. If, if a student wanted to take an online class that was not what's been taken in the past, it's, because there are classes out there that are pretty good, that are available. If, if a student wanted to take that, is there a process for approval that they could get credit for or, you know, because, because right now students could sign up to do for classes that's offered by somebody else. Is there a process?
Grant processes?
Yeah. Is that, is there a process in place district-wide or whatever, or is it kind of up to the counselor at the school? What I've found is one counselor says yes and another counselor says no. And is there any discussion about consistency or at a higher level that says this, this one's okay, this one's not okay? At, at least until we get a cadre or a group of courses offered that, that will be?
We've already benefited greatly from the wisdom of the members of our advisory team and, and what we're hearing is exactly what you described where it's very much building by building, sort of counselor discretion. There's certainly some guidelines, but how it really happens in practice is building to building. And I do think that it would be wise to think about how we could leverage what we have to offer and be a little more cautious with what we count as credit.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Dr. Hackenworth, Title I. You found some money for us.
Sequestration's gonna be part of this discussion.
Good evening. I, I come before you tonight to give you just a, a brief Title I update. In this update, I want to really touch on just two primary areas. The first being school identification and accountability and some changes that have taken place since Missouri received the waiver. And the second is kind of our current state of funding in the district and that's kind of been an ongoing process we've been talking about since June and I just want to give you a little, an update there. So a, as you are, are very aware, in June, Missouri received the, the waiver from No Child Left Behind. Part of that waiver changed the, the process for identifying schools according to how they perform from an academic standpoint. In that process, three new levels of identification were established. You may have heard this briefly in July, I believe Brian updated you on this, but the first is reward. So reward schools are Title I schools that have demonstrated high performance, high progress, or both in the areas of academic achievement over the last three years. And in Missouri, there's, there'll be about 102 of those identified and those have not been identified as of yet. And the second level of identification are focus schools. Focus schools are Title I schools whose super-subgroups or student gap groups, you may have heard both of those terms, are the lowest, among the lowest performing in the state over the last three years according to state assessment results. There are 114 focus schools that have been identified in Missouri. And kind of as a reminder, that, that student, that super-subgroup or that student gap group And kind of as a reminder, that, that student, that super-subgroup or that student gap group, that's the combination of all of those subgroups that, that we've talked about in the past. African-American, Hispanic, low-income, students with disabilities and English, English language learners combined to make that super-subgroup. And then finally, we have priority schools. Priority schools are the lowest performing Title One schools in the state for overall achievement in English language arts and mathematics. Again, over a three-year period, there are fifty-seven of those schools that have been identified in Missouri. So what that means for Springfield Public Schools is that we ended up with four focus schools. We have Bowerman Elementary, Westport, Williams and York. We don't have any schools that were identified as priority schools, just these four focus schools. So what, what does that mean for those schools? The requirements, the requirements for these schools are all going to be laid out in accountability plans that each school has to develop. The accountability plans are a little bit different than some of the, the plans that we've had in the past in that they are to focus on adult behaviors, improving the behavior, behavior of adults to impact student achievement. The areas that those accountability plans will address are leadership, collaborative cultures, curriculum and assessment, and effective instruction. Schools will, can be exited from focus status, status after they no longer meet the definition of a focus school. In order to do that, they have to demonstrate that that student gap group or that super-subgroup has decreased the number of non-proficient students by twenty-five percent over a three-year period. I'll let that soak in for just a second. Reduce the number of non-proficient students in that super-subgroup by twenty-five percent over a three-year period. And that's in the areas of both English language arts and mathematics. So the next steps for, for us, we've assembled a district team to provide support for the focus schools. Obviously, we have the principals, there's support from their site, curriculum, several of us at the district level providing that support. Right now, we're in the process of developing their accountability plans based on a needs assessment that we've been working through. The plans are due to DESI in December and those plans will be, begin the implementation process in January. So that's kind of where we're at. And again, this, this will be a three-year process for those, for those four schools. I'm gonna go ahead and move into the next part of the presentation, the funding, and then I can come back and answer any questions that you might have about the identification, the accountability piece in the event that some questions might be answered. So we'll start with a little background. As you recall, last summer, we received a Title One reduction in funding of about nine hundred thousand dollars. That led us to drop three title sites, Pittman, Twain and Delaware. Additionally, we've reduced some of the site allocations to the remaining Title One sites. And we cut our wonder years classes almost in half to, to respond to that budget reduction. Additionally, due to DESI receiving the waiver, we were unable to spend from the twenty percent set aside that we used to use for SES and school choice. And we, we did, we had to do that until our focus schools were identified because part of that twenty percent could be applied to their interventions if necessary. So in essence, we've been sitting on about one point five million dollars that we haven't been able to, to do anything with to, to this point in time. Recently, we found out that that twenty percent set aside had been released for our use. Additionally, we found out that any anticipated cuts to title won't happen until next year. So we, that piece is kind of out of the way. Also, we, we learned that the funding for the focus schools and their first year implementation of their accountability plans, the funding will be provided in large part by DESI. So little to, to none of the money will be taken from that twenty percent set aside. So what that means is we have that money available to us now to use as we see, I guess, how, how we see fit. So what's the plan then for, for using that, that money? We're, we're getting this at an odd time. The, the middle of the year is a difficult time for us because ideally, we want to use that funding to hire highly qualified teachers. Putting FTE in classrooms is really the, the, where we get the most bang for the buck, obviously. So the plan at this time is to increase wonder years at Shady Dell by five classrooms. As you recall, we have a co-teaching model currently at, at Shady where we have two wonder years teachers per classroom and, and twenty students. We'll split those classes, those teachers will go to individual spaces and serve additional students. We'll also add one wonder years classroom at McBride. We'd like to add additional, but there's very little space out there in our schools to add, add any FTE there. We'll also provide wonder years professional learning that was cut as part of the nine hundred dollar reduction that we received early in the year. And then we'll funnel approximately six hundred thousand dollars back to the sites, probably to be used for professional learning and some staffing the second semester. Any additional funds will be carried over into the thirteen-fourteen school year when we can use it for highly qualified teachers. We feel right now it's important to be conservative, not knowing what sorts of cuts are, are coming our way next year. So that's kind of a, a snapshot of what's, what's happening right now and I'd be happy to entertain whatever questions you might have. Brian Hubbard and, and Matt Goodman are both here as well. They, they've been working with us on these, on these processes.
How much accountability, how much control do we have locally over these accountability plans and how the, how they're structured? Are we submitting a plan to the state for their approval or are they telling us how to do it?
Well, yes. Of those, those areas that I identified, if I can pull them back up here for you. We, we have the flexibility of choosing which of those best meet the needs of those particular schools with the exception of leadership. Leadership is one that all sites, there are all schools that are focus schools are required to, to implement an accountability plan. And in fact, DESI is providing the training for our principals as part of the leadership accountability plan. So there's about a fifteen-month training program that principals, actually a team of about eleven from the district, will go through as part of that required plan for leadership. The others, we have greater flexibility as to how we want to build those plans. Still focused in those areas.
That training probably takes some of the principals out of the buildings and out of the sites.
It's about two days a month that they, they'll, they'll be taking part in that training. There's also a forty-hour online module that they'll have to complete and there'll be an action research piece for each of the principals as well.
Good questions. Ms. Callen.
Well, I have to say I'm disappointed that four of our schools have been identified as focus schools. And that's over ten percent of our elementary sites. So I think as a district and as a board, we should be concerned about that. And I guess what I would like to know is when, when did this information finally come down the pike? Because I know that when you talked to us in August, was it? That we didn't anticipate that any of our schools would meet this criteria and then four of them did.
I, I think what we, certainly what we anticipated is that we wouldn't have any schools that would be priority schools. And we didn't know about focus schools for sure. We knew there were, there was always that possibility. I, you know, I can't tell you exactly when we found that out. Brian, was it late September, early October?
Um, I think first, I think in September. DESI notified us, I think, in, in September. At the time, it wasn't clear if they were going to, to do a press release. Really, it, it's been kind of frustrating year as far as information coming in. I know they're working on things with the waiver and it's coming to us in bits and pieces throughout the year. I believe we found out in September that we would have some. I know whenever I spoke before you in, was it July? I mentioned that I'd heard from the state that we could have one to two and then it became four whenever we actually found out. And at that time, we still didn't know really anything as far as the process. Then we started to learn bits and pieces of the process. As far as the twenty percent, they were still saying you still have to hold on and wait until you find out about that information before going forward. So as far as actually learning about the accountability plans, it's just been recently over the last month that we've learned and gone to more meetings about how to develop these.
Have we done anything locally in looking at the data from these four sites to look for commonalities, you know, trends? You know, what do we see that we might be able to do locally? You know, with these four sites that, you know? Because I, I guess that's what I'm interested in as a board member to know, you know, are there similarities? I mean, just knowing the leadership of these schools. Some, we've made leadership changes, some are long-term, you know, fairly seasoned leaders. So, you know, that doesn't seem to at least be something that sticks out. But have we done any drilling down to know, you know?
Yes, Matt, Matt has provided each principal with a, a needs assessment of student achievement as well as IMSIP. I'll let him talk to that.
Brian hinted at this idea. It's been a very aggressive timeline to turn around the information we receive with requirements coming out in place. And so one piece of that was a needs assessment that each building were, was to have conducted in an effort to assist the sites, the principals specifically in that process. We volunteered our services to run the numbers for them on ways that we would all agree on. It's important pieces to look at. And we have done that to provide that data back to the sites. Honestly, we just turned that around to them about a week and a half ago and we haven't even had a chance to look at that as far as what are we seeing across each individually? We had to simply get each individually built. That is something we have on our radar as kind of a, a piece to study, but I do not have an answer as to what the findings are at this time.
And when would that be available to the board?
At, at your request.
December, December, January. So you can come back to us on that.
And is this one point five million at risk from the sequestration that's looming?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Is this one point five million, is this at risk to, um, the sequestration that's being talked about?
No, the sequestration has been delayed until next year. So i- if that occurs, they've, they've assured us that would be next year.
Yeah, starts in July, thirteenth.
Yep, yep. Which is one of the reasons that we want to be conservative and have a bit of a carryover to anticipate that.
So Mrs. Treese says like we can place this for this year and then it goes away next year, right?
Mr. Hosmer.
How many title schools do we have? Elementary?
Seventeen.
We have seventeen?
Seventeen elementary.
So this is four out of seventeen, correct? Cause it's only dealing with Title One schools. So it's quite a bit more than ten percent.
I was talking about our elementary, our whole sites.
Well, I understand, but the, the rest are more than even under consideration. It's only Title One that were under consideration, so. And just doing the math, I mean, it seems like having four schools is more schools than we should based on number of students we have in our district versus the number of students in the state of Missouri.
Question, the, the numbers that come up and, and these numbers are for results over three years, correct? Okay. Is there a question in, in your mind as to whether the numbers are accurate?
I. So what's interesting is with this focus and priority school piece, we, we kind of have to, in, in this part of the work, think back to No Child Left Behind and think about below basic, basic proficient and advanced. And so when we say reduce the number of non-proficient, that essentially means reduce the number of students in below basic and basic. So that's coming from the state assessment. And yes, we have full faith in the state assessment as it relates to the accuracy of student scores coming in. I mean, it is that, it is that data that is kind of determining this placement.
Cause what, I guess what strikes me, if in fact, the numbers are accurate and the numbers show something that is troubling. And again, with No Child Left Behind, you never know. Sometimes you see numbers and, and they don't really show what they, what people are telling you they show. But, but, but if the numbers are accurate and, and if the numbers, if what they show is troubling and we have this many schools, I guess my concern as a board member is for the last three years, I've not heard much about problems we have with these four schools or, or we've got, let's start focus. We've got some big issues here. And I, I wonder as a board member whether or not that's a failure. And I don't know, I don't think I know the answer to that, but, but as Ms. Callen said, you know, it's a bit of a slap in the face to me. And, and it's, it's certainly something that, that I, as a board member, didn't hear, haven't heard much about, we need to put a focus here for this reason. And if we don't, we're gonna, we're gonna have some issues. And maybe again, maybe it's, maybe we're, maybe I'm jumping a little bit further ahead and, and these numbers aren't gonna show or, or aren't gonna show this. But, but that's certainly a concern I have getting this information at, at the board table tonight.
Part, part of that, and, and you touched on anticipating problems with these schools. Part of that is we didn't know how this was going to be measured. So it would have been difficult for us to project down the road that these schools would end up where they're at. So that's something we learned late. Now, under, even under the old system, we had title sites that, that were not as, performing as high as we wanted them to, that were in various levels of, of intervention, I guess, or school improvement. So that's not something that's new. Part of that, this, this process is that schools are identified at those levels. So that's, that's been there for a while. Now, being able to identify these four schools would have, would have been impossible until we learned how they would be measured under the new system. But it's not to say we're happy with them being there.
We had all this information. We didn't know how it stacked up against other Title Ones in the state. But we certainly had all this information over the last three years to see the gaps and, and whether those gaps were closing or not closing and, and what the gaps represent, correct?
Well, yes, however, we weren't aware of the, the change in the super-subgroup. So that, that's a significant change as to how these, these schools are being measured. When you look at a York, for example, and we're talking about the student gap group, that's ninety-three percent of their, their students. So it's basically their whole school. So it's, it's, it's a bit of a, a throwback to this proficiency and this sort of away from growth and back to how many of our students are proficient, non-proficient and that whole status piece.
And I, I wonder if there's something that could come to the board with a summary of, of look, we've taken, we've taken another look at these four schools and here's what we've seen and here's what we're seeing. In, in, in addition to what the state's gonna require us to do. For, for my benefit as a board member, I'd like to know, you know, what the, what the feeling has been and, and, and just a, a summary for each school. Is that something that can be?
Yeah, and I, I think that will be.
Cause again, we may, I, I may be jumping the gun on these numbers. It's a.
Well, we still don't know the reward schools either, right? So we could have, we could have quite a few there. And I think that would be even a, a more interesting.
Right. I think our accountability plans will help kind of tell that story and show you the direction that we're going with those schools. So I, we could produce that for you.
This is, this isn't a question. It's just a, a real concern of mine that we're gonna send people for leadership training to DESI. That is a real concern of mine. I, I, just all of the things they've had to deal with and lack of information and not getting it. And we're gonna send people for, and I know it's required, so we're gonna ship people up there. That is a huge concern and I hope they're contracting that out. I mean, that's the only thing.
It is, it is being contracted out.
Thank goodness, thank goodness.
And, and we're actually gonna host it here so we can pull the mic if we need to.
I, I just, that, that, just to take people out of the building about leadership when we just, we've been struggling to, when we know kids need help and we can't identify who they are or what schools or whatever that. My concern is that we're still gonna be measured on state map assessments. And our stand on map assessments is we don't, we understand that's just one little piece. I mean, it's a piece of how you measure kids, but not everything. I mean, it's a piece of how you measure kids, but not everything. And they're gonna measure everything, and you're gonna have to make 25% growth, and I don't know if there are specifics, but I think probably in these four schools, we have a high mobility rate. So how are you gonna take care of kids that weren't there and come in, and how do you get out of that? That's why the growth model is such a better model, but we're gonna do it by the same outdated method, and we're gonna be judged on that outdated, that, there's just so many things. And I really hope the accountability plan, here we are, we're gonna be into January, they'll be taking those tests in April, and we don't have a half year's already gone, and that'll be the first time they take the test again. So I, I mean, I like the accountability plans on changing adult behaviors, because if those aren't changed in the school, then what happens to the students? That isn't gonna change. But I think, and I know, schools are having some say in what they need to do there, but I hope as a district, we're also looking and saying, as you change adult behaviors, here's your menu to pick from, not pick from anything you wanna do here on this accountability plan, because when I see collaborative cultures, curriculum assessments, we've got certain curriculum and assessments we want covered, there's no option. And effective instruction, we, if we don't know that, we all submit our risk nations. So we know what that is, we know what it is, and I hope then that really needs to come back to us so we understand what's gonna happen there. And I just don't want, it's interesting that that's the focus schools, because I think what will work there probably will work in any of our schools, whether they're Title I or not. I just, it's our problem, we've got it, but I think the way the state has dealt with all these things and not given us the information has penalized kids again, has penalized students again, and has not, they're not only telling us what, but how. They're even telling us how on leadership to solve, solve that issue, and I just don't, I don't like any of that. So whatever we can do locally to push back, I think we need to push back, because I, I'm frightened that three years from now, it'll, the 25% based on however they're gonna do it will not be obtained. We may have, based on our growth model, grown and be making improvement, but they're gonna say something different. And it's, to me, it's really disappointing.
So you've got some marching orders, local control, look at the data, give us follow-up. Pretty much.
I would agree with Mr. Hosmer about the data, that I think that'd be good, because it is a map-based result, and I really think we need to look at the performance series and see what that's done. You may have already done it, I don't know.
We have.
But one of the things I'd just like to just alert the board about, when all the IMSIP V comes through, at some point down the road, I mean, this is not good, having the four schools as a focus group, it's gonna be a mess statewide, that you're gonna have schools and districts that aren't gonna perform at that bar, at the higher bar, and it's gonna be a PR nightmare for the state.
Want to say we support IMSIP?
Is that the IMSIP V that we're supporting?
No, I think raising the bar is good, it's just a matter of, it's gonna change the, where you are.
The ranking.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a bad thing, but when the bar goes up, you're farther away from the bar. And that's what I'm talking about, the PR, and we may be okay, we may not be okay, I don't know what the results are gonna be, but there's gonna be districts in this state that have thought they were districts of perform, distinction, that aren't gonna be anymore. Not because they're not good schools, not because their performance series are great, their scores are great, they're doing wonderful things, it's just gonna be a new bar, and that will be a public relations nightmare to have the public understand that the system's changed and not the schools. And so I just, that's just one of those things that I think we need to keep in the back of our mind down the road.
If I may come in, kind of in response to both Mr. Lee and Mr. Renner, Mr. Renner used the word outdated, and that's an appropriate term. This is the only spot with these focus schools, with the priority school piece, that is still tied to the old way of thinking about AYP of proficient and advanced. IMSIP V in many ways will seek to remedy that. We're not carrying points forward for purposes of accreditation of just proficient and advanced. Now, it doesn't mean status isn't there, it still is there, below basic, basic, proficient and advanced, but there will be different multipliers that come in to give a more total picture of the overall student performance and saying, we will, we will be incentivized for removing students from below basic to basic versus just basic to proficient, essentially in that system. So I'd contend that the IMSIP V is more complete, and from my perspective of an endorsement or support, when we look at the IMSIP V standards, they're standards that we've identified as in alignment with where we're at on kind of the SP V piece, but the devil's in the details of the measurement component of it, and it will be a highly complex system. We have, people are aware and they understand proficient, advanced, percent top two, the old way, and that's what makes it hard from a reform perspective when we're still being assessed and judged and evaluated along that line. So those would be my response.
Thank you all very much. Very interesting. Two action items we need to vote on tonight. 6.01 is the tax anticipation note financing.
Last month, the board gave administration the authority to go and solicit approvals for tax anticipation note financing. We have done that, we received two proposals. The proposal that we are recommending is with UMB, and that is for up to $10 million in tax anticipation note financing at 0.85% fixed rate of interest with $2,500 in closing and documentation fees. We, my understanding is that we will not have any need for financing for November. December is still up in the air, but we still have hopes that we will not need it in December either, but we need the board's approval on this so that should we, should we need it, we can go out and get it.
Any questions for Mr. Chiswick?
So it's $2,500 plus whatever interest we'd be carrying, and generally it's a month or?
Right.
Motion by Mrs. Twitty and a second by Mrs. Callen that the board accepts the UMB Thank you. And 6.02 is the athletic equipment lease purchase.
This is the financing for the Healthy Place to Play initiative. The proposal presented to the board is for financing of $3.15 million over 10 years. We sent that out to bid, we received two proposals. The proposal that we're recommending is with Commerce Bank. That is for a one-year lease purchase with 10 years of renewals, and that's at an interest rate of 3.04%. The annual payments will be about $370,000, and as the board is aware, that will be paid out of funds that have been contributed by the public. Any questions?
I take a motion that the board accept the proposal of Commerce Bank for the lease purchase financing.
I'll move.
Mr. Lee?
Second.
By Mr. Renner, thank you. On Section 7, I'd like to move the 7.07 audit up to the beginning so that our auditor may drive back to St. Louis. And if everybody's okay, we'll keep going, because I know Dr. Ritter and Mr. Lee are both driving to Columbia after the meeting. That's all right with everybody? Okay?
Thank you. Under separate cover, you'll receive the independent auditor's report. Do they receive a hard copy of that, or is it online?
It's on Board Docs.
It's on Board Docs, okay. Nothing hard copy these days. The audited financial statements were prepared by Daniel Jones and Associates CPAs. For the 20th year in a row, we received an unqualified audit, which means that we met all generally accepted accounting principles. All persons involved should be commended for this accomplishment and for their continuing efforts, and I would like to particularly thank Mr. John Efferist, who has completely taken over responsibility for the preparation of the financials. And at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Al Kirchhofer, President Daniel Jones and Associates, to present to the board how the audit went. Al?
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Board of Education. I want to thank you for the opportunity to audit Springfield School District, and as Steve said, I'd like to thank John. Year went great. This is our eighth year that we've audited the district, and as Steve mentioned, you guys did receive an unqualified opinion on your financial statements. In addition to that, we look at other areas. We're required to look at the state budget process and attendance and transportation. There was no issues in either of those areas. And also, we're also, also to look at federal expenditures, since you receive over a half a million dollars of federal expenditures, right now I think it's $28 million, we're required to look at those federal programs, and we found no instance of noncompliance in those programs. Overall, the audit went great, as always. It's a model district. I appreciate the opportunity. Have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Kirchhofer. Starting to sound like a broken record, but thank you.
I know. Yeah, I like boring.
We like that, all right. Let's see, we'll vote on this under, next week on the consent agenda tonight, okay. Thank you very much, have a safe trip home tonight. 7.01 is Board of Education policy GBBDA.
Yes, this is a revision to an existing board policy, which is the employee sick leave plan. This policy identifies the circumstances under which an employee may use sick leave for themselves or for an immediate family member, and the revisions that we have tonight actually adjust the definition of immediate family member to make that definition more narrow. The district's current policy before revision is compared to other Missouri school districts, compared to the MSBA model policy, and compared to most large employers, overly broad. So this brings our policy more in line with those benchmarks. And it is a, it was developed from a draft MSBA policy and has been reviewed by legal counsel.
Questions for Mr. McKenna. Mr. Renner?
What, wasn't this negotiated?
It was, and so the policy revision that you'll make tonight, you'll vote on, or I'm sorry, that you'll vote on in the regular meeting will affect unrepresented groups. The collective bargaining process that you've already voted on for that contract affected those groups, and the board will recall that nearly all of those groups did elect to make this same change to their contracts.
Okay, what happens to the group that didn't?
That did not?
Yeah.
As a part of the process, the give and take of the negotiations process, that particular group highlighted other concessions that they were willing to give up in exchange for what they wanted.
So all of our employees won't have the same one?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I got a question.
Hosmer?
And you said everybody, this was, employee groups agreed to this, this is not something employee groups wanted to change, is that accurate? Is something the administration wanted to change to narrow?
That's correct.
This is not employee groups, though, right?
Right. And was there a history of this being abused?
There is not evidence to indicate that our use of sick leave is outside the norm.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Oh, you should stay there, because you're gonna talk about several other things, the health plan.
702 is amendments to the health plan. The amendments that we've got proposed tonight are consistent with the requirements of the Federal Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, and from the perspective of the plan participant, there will probably not be a noticeable impact to most participants.
Questions?
Are these changes gonna be rolled out year by year?
There is a tiered implementation under the federal statute, and so the district is elected to opt in to some of the changes a little earlier than required, but there is a phased implementation, yes.
You said there's not, you don't know what the cost, is there some point in time we're gonna kind of get some cost figures?
Yes, the board has provided an update, as you're aware, on the status of the health benefit trust, so, you know, we'll be able to monitor adjustments in the expenditure from that trust, but it's, as you know, difficult to directly attribute that to any one thing, but we will continue to monitor that.
Is that your question? I thought you were looking for cost.
Statement?
Yeah.
That was a question. Was it not a question?
Yeah. I thought it was.
7.03, the pharmacy benefit management services.
This is a contract renewal of a relationship that the district has had with a variety of providers over the years. The role is basically to administer the pharmacy plan, prescription, claims, all of the services associated with that. The district did contract, use our existing contract with Gallagher Benefit Services to market this coverage, or this contract, excuse me, annually. We received seven responses and analyzed those in consultation with Gallagher Benefit Services. Our recommendation tonight would be to renew our existing contract with MedTrack Services for a contract period beginning January 1, 2013, and continuing through 2015 with optional renewals to 2017. The fiscal note is listed there, $4.2 million annually in a prescription drug spend, which includes both claims and administrative fees.
Questions, Mr. Hosmer?
And what is the administrative fees, general?
The administrative fee is based on, is a per fill, and so it's difficult to give you an exact estimate, but I can tell you what the trend has been. So since, in 2010, $3.8 million in total drug spend, and the administrative fee was $172,000. 2011, $4.3 million, the administrative spend was $176,000. And through August of 2012, just over $3 million in drug spend and $116,000 was the administrative expense.
So that's the money that we paid to MedTrack or have been paying to MedTrack Services to manage this benefit?
That's correct.
And then we go out and get the seven responses, was that the cheapest alternative?
It, overall, I don't have the responses in front of me. It was not the cheapest alternative. It was, I believe, the second cheapest alternative, and there are a variety of factors, including network interruption and all of those types of considerations that we review.
Thank you. 7.04 is staff engagement, staff selection.
So thinking back to our presentation and the strategic discussion phase of our meeting tonight, this is a new contract that the district would enter into to help us with that first phase of the talent management strategy, the initial talent coming into our system, and trying to wade through those 11,000 applications per year to try to find the best candidate for any given opening. You may be aware, the district has in the past used a variety of processes, each of those are kind of at the discretion of each administrator to find the talent that, in the applicant pool. And this would allow us to enter into a relationship with a vendor that provides these types of services across the country, really for four main purposes. One would be to design and implement a web-based assessment that would be a part of our application online itself. Each of those assessments are geared specifically to the different types of jobs that we have available and would provide us data about the applicant's likelihood to be successful in those jobs. Secondly, to provide a structured interview and to train our leaders on the use of that interview so that the interator reliability, similar to the conversation we had in evaluation, is consistent across our leadership team. Thirdly, to, I mentioned the training already, that's the third component. And then fourth, to administer an assessment that helps us to measure levels of staff engagement and satisfaction across the entire workforce in the system, which is the first time we've done that, and we want to partner those two together because our research indicates that the better job we do in the selection phase, the more likely those individuals will be to be engaged in the work that they're doing and vice versa. So we did issue a request for proposal for this service, and So we did issue a request for proposal for this service, and we see, we received three responses for that. A committee was developed to go through those responses. And the recommendation tonight is to enter into a contract with HumanX Ventures for these services. The fiscal notes provided for you there, broken down by the screening assessment, the fixed overhead cost for the web-based component, the training component, and the administration of the engagement and satisfaction reporting. And this is just an initial one-year contract because it is such a new service for us, we want to test the water and see how that goes.
Please.
A question on, you kind of answered that one, this one year to test it. But, and I agree with everything that you're looking for. My question would be, what are we getting that we couldn't do ourselves?
This, the instruments-
If we had the staff to do it, is there anything in here that they're doing that we couldn't do ourselves?
I, I think I would look at that in two facets. One, the instruments that we're relying on, specifically the assessment online and the structured interview, are validated and designed through industrial organizational psychologists and really, over the years with school districts, have been tailored and honed in to really capture the highest level of talent for, for jobs that school districts have. So that's one thing that I think is critical to us being successful in this endeavor. And secondly, is related to, and you touched on it, the efficiency of our process. With as many applications as we have, to have a process that helps us to really highlight the high flyers right at the very beginning of the process helps us to be so much more likely to bring those people into our system in the long term. And there's just no way to do that outside of a, of a army of people or a technology solution to help you with that.
Yeah.
Have you talked to any other districts that use this company?
We have. Closest one is NIXA. NIXA's had a relationship with HumanX for a number of years and-
To do this exact same sort of thing?
Yes. The one piece that they don't use them for is the engagement and satisfaction monitoring, but they do use them for the other components. And the HR director in NIXA, her words to me were that this was, this is the professional development that is talked about, in some cases more than other services that are provided by their district. Of course, their standard maybe isn't quite the same as ours, but it's definitely well thought of and has been successful for them in finding talent.
Where is this company located?
It's in Lincoln or Omaha. I believe it's in Lincoln.
Number of employees driving the cost? What's the-
How is the cost figured?
Yeah. What drives, what NIXA pays versus what?
Yeah, it, there's, it's actually structured based on student enrollment, which is an interesting concept, but many districts, many organizations that provide services like this to school districts focus on student enrollment, for some reason. I, I don't know that I would do it the same way, but that is the focus. So, so looking at the cost specifically, the training component is just based on number of people trained, but the bracket that you're in within their pricing structure is based on your student enrollment. And so we'll have all, all members of the leadership team will go through the training. And that's, you know, once you're trained, you're certified to administer it, and that's the, that piece of the financial.
So, I guess what I'm seeing here is that there's a, there's a web-based potential applicants, go on, online and take a, do this assessment. And there's some algorithm that runs through those responses and supposedly ranks these people on some scale for us?
That's part of it.
Okay. And then there's, it's going to give us a structured interview, actual questions to be you, to be asked, is that?
Yes.
And so those are the face-to-face questions you'd be asking potential applicants, or people would be asking potential applicants?
A part of it.
Okay. And then training of people to ask those questions?
Training of our interviewers so that we're consistent in the evaluation of the process.
So there's more than just writing down the answers? I mean, there's, there's a, there's a way that you score those answers, I guess?
That's correct.
Is that what you're saying? Okay. And then what is the, how do they do the, the measuring the staff engagement and satisfaction?
It's a, it's another instrument, again, that's been validated to be a predictor of engagement and satisfaction in organizations across the country. It's administered online, and so, you know, that you would log in and take the, similar to a survey, online. Those results would be compiled by HumanX and sent to us. We would look for trends, any pockets of concern, and then HumanX would actually have a team of individuals to come in to pockets of concern and lead feedback sessions where the, the district administration is not in the room, but it, feedback is gathered through this, through HumanX and then sent back to the district.
And this would be engagement and satisfaction of every employee across the district?
Correct.
On what type of a timeline? Yearly?
Well, it would be up to us on how we, how we wanted to do that. They have some, some districts, and it's flexible, they have some districts that do it annually, some do it on a cycle every two years or every three years, something like that.
And then the cost of $90,000, that's a yearly cost?
No. The, the training component, the $42,000 is a, once, again, once you're trained, you're trained as a leader. So we would just be paying for, for turnover, people that are new hires to the leadership team. And then the staff selection and engagement is just the year that we administer the, the survey of engagement and satisfaction. The software subscription is an annual fee.
Okay. So if we did it annually, you'd have at least $47,000 going forward every year?
That's correct.
Mr. Ritter?
I noticed on your first presentation, you said get the best and keep the best. I'm wondering how many employees we have now that maybe, this assessment thing bothers me because I've just seen too many, now I'm talking about certified people teaching, so I'm not going anyplace else. We do a real good job keeping the best. We use our step-up program, which people are modeled all over the state. But what this looks like to me, this is, this is getting, what you said there in the first, getting somehow getting the best. And I've not seen any assessment yet that's identified 100% of who's going to really be a good teacher. I haven't seen one yet. You know, we've used transcripts and GPAs and involvement and leadership activities and all the other stuff, and then somebody gets in and bombs and somebody else gets in and blooms. So I'm, I'm real concerned that if this was a foolproof deal, I think every district in the nation would be doing it. I, I would think everybody would say, if you can get me the best people by doing an online assessment, then there wouldn't be anybody that wouldn't be doing this because there wouldn't, so I, I just really, I understand the training, we just talked about that. Everybody, if you're going to evaluate, everybody needs to be asking the same questions. We need to be able to evaluate people the same. What are we looking for? What characteristics? Are they exhibiting them? And I just, I don't know. I'm, I'm real leery of something that's going to screen somebody out or move somebody in, knowing the complexities of going into a classroom teaching that you can identify on any kind of, that's almost like the map test.
Yeah. And I, and I agree with you. I think you've got to be-
I don't have much use for that.
Yeah, we, we have to be very careful to recognize that there's so, there's a lot of factors that go into making a good hiring decision, and this is just one input into that. Certainly not the, you know, the end-all, be-all to the factors that we will use. But I think as we look at what the district has done historically, we recognize that there has not been a systematic process for trying to do something to identify the factors of, that we know successful teachers typically have. The rest of it, the interpersonal skills, the things that come across in an interview, you know, you're not going to be able to replace the gut feeling you get as an interviewer.
Let me help with this. I'm very familiar with this. In fact, I was a guinea pig for several of these things, one for deacon, another one for principal, one, another one for superintendent. It wasn't ventures, it was Gallup at that time. I don't know, Gallup bid, by the way?
Gallup did bid and the-
But anyway, the, the thing that they're really screening for is empathy. And so in other words, being able to have good empathy, being loyal, being able to have strong relationships, very critical principles as far as a good teacher's, is concerned. And the research is showing that it's very high, very high affect or effectiveness as far as this process is concerned. So I think, I think it's a good, it's one of many different ways to look at it, but I tell you what, I would lean heavily on it because I used it for hiring of principals in my experiences in different, different venues, and I've yet to see it fail. So anyway, I think it's a good way to screen initially.
I wonder if we could have 50 of our best teachers take this assessment?
I think you're going to find them to be all very good.
I'm serious. Why would, why wouldn't we have run through 50 of our best teachers across the district and-
See if we would even look at-
Pick the best teachers.
Pick the best teachers.
Opprobate the best teachers.
No, no, no. Run them through this assessment.
That's what I'm saying.
And just, and see if this says ding, 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 these are all great teachers or-
But we don't really have a way to-
We don't have a way to pick our 50 best teachers. You want to pick them?
I think you could talk to principals and they could give you three or four teachers that are exemplify great teachers.
That are getting results.
Any other questions for Mr. McKenna? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oops. I lost my-
Sorry.
I lost my agenda.
Lost my place, too. Train of thought, it was a short train. Go ahead, Dr. Harrell.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening again. You have an action item in front of you on purchase SpedTrak IEP software from Ionwave Technologies. In July of 2012, the Special Education Department, in conjunction with the Purchasing Department, released an RFP requesting new IEP software. We had six vendors respond to that RFP. There was a rubric compiled, and the rubric was extensive and covered items such as operating systems, company data, compliance with IDEA, ease of use, appropriate forms, and core data reporting. A team of 20 individuals reviewed these rubrics. The team spent two days reading each vendor's responses and rating their responses on the rubric. Two vendors were chosen and asked to return to put on day-long presentations about their product. Those two vendors were Maximus with Tinnet Software and Ionwave with SpedTrak Software. A second rubric was compiled after the vendor demonstrations, and the unanimous selection was with Ionware and Core Ionwave, excuse me, Technologies Incorporated. This purchase would be made using Part B monies, federal Part B monies. The annual cost for the IEP software is $45,000, and those are provided for five years at that same annual rate for a total of $225,000 over those five years. For the 2012-13 school year, there would be a prorated rate that would begin in January of 2013. Are there any questions?
Who was on the selection team for this?
There were 20 individuals. I think I have that list.
Were they all internal again?
They were all-
Were there any parents on that team? Were there any parents on that team? I, I'd just like to make a general statement that this is the second time tonight that we've had a, a team that's looking at, especially IEP information, you know, that is very tied to parents being part of that team. And it seems like as we look at those kinds of tools within our system, that we'd want to make sure that, you know, this ends result, unless I'm not understanding what this is. But I mean, this generates the information that the IEP becomes, right?
You're absolutely right. We, we, we could have had parents on that committee and, and should have. I think in reflection on it, part of the reason that that wasn't selected is because these are working documents that the teachers fill out for the IEP meetings, not necessarily documents for parental usage, more for parental review. But that's probably the reason that there wasn't one, but there could have been and probably should have been.
Right. I think as we look at who is a part of our teams-
Absolutely.
Whether it's in curriculum development or IEP development, I think we need to make sure that we're looking beyond our own employees. That's just philosophical statement for me.
I, I agree. I'll note that, we'll make corrections to that.
Any questions? Mr. Lee?
Just one comment about basically the commitment, the five years, and I only make this comment because of sequestration coming up if IDEA gets cut. Is that part of that?
I do not believe so, no.
So Part B is not part of that?
I don't believe we have any concerns with that particular cut, do we? If you want, I'll let you step up here.
I'm not arguing the merits, but I was just concerned about the funding with respect to what happens in 2013.
At this, at this point, we're fine. We are already paying an annual fee for a software component that we use, so this is just substituting that for the current company.
Okay.
We're fine with funds to cover that.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Grausy.
And let's see, you've got one more, Dr. Harrell.
Last month, the administration came before the board, asking for permission to go into agreement with DESI and Jared Enterprises about a second lease, or excuse me, a new lease for a second Exi Center on the south side of town. What you have here is a request for approval of that lease agreement. With this lease agreement, Jared Enterprises would enter into a five-year lease agreement beginning approximately January 2013 for three additional classrooms for the Early Childhood Special Education Center located at 3447 West Farm Road, 168. This facility will be remodeled and furnished by Jared Properties to meet the needs of the Exi students, teachers, staff. The renewal lease agreement provides for a period of five years, five lease years, excuse me, beginning approximately in January 2013, and the district will then renew that lease annually. This is a lease that would be reimbursed by DESI. When I brought this to you last month, I misspoke, and I want to make a correction on that. What I said to you was that the lease agreement would be specifically between Jared Enterprises and DESI. That's incorrect. The lease agreement would specifically be with, between Springfield Public Schools and Jared Enterprises. There's a second agreement between DESI and Springfield Public Schools that reimburses us for that lease agreement. So I misspoke, and I want to make sure I clarified that.
I think I read in here somewhere that DESI's on board with this lease agreement.
That is correct.
Yeah, there it is, thanks.
And they will also send us supporting documentation once the lease is completed.
Questions?
And this is just for the three, the initial classrooms, not any build-out down the road? That would be a separate?
That would be, we would-
We would renegotiate a new contract?
We renegotiate this lease. That's correct, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Oh, we've already done the last one. Okay. Routine action items, mostly minutes, and personnel changes are on board docs. We have no other public comments. Legislative update. We kind of had that. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I would like for, not tonight, not at eight o'clock, but maybe next meeting. I would really like for the board to have a discussion about the sequestration and the fiscal cliff, as far as if there's anything we should do, because it's going to impact us one way or the other. Something's going to happen, I don't know. Maybe nothing, depends on what happens. But I, I just think we need to have that discussion, and I don't want to do it tonight just because of timeframe, but I, I mean, it's your pleasure. I just, I just think that's a legislative issue that's going to be hitting the whole education community statewide and federally. And it could impact us.
May no more by-
And it may no more by then, too, because they are talking about it. It may not even be an issue, but I don't know.
Who knows? Yeah. Future issues? Anybody have any future issues? I only want us to remind you of the potential, the probable legislative update on November 24th.
When?
29th, 29th, I'm looking at 4:00 P.M. November 29th at 4:00 P.M.
Reception, yeah.
Reception. That's a update. Other issues?
I'd like to make one comment, and this is, it'd take one second. I would like to publicly thank, about three weeks ago, MSBA had a board meeting, and we had a presentation on continuous quality improvement by our staff members, Marty Moore, Marilyn Monroe, and Lori Wertz, 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 fourth grade teacher, on continuous improvement and how it's used in the classroom. You wouldn't believe the response that we got on the quality of not just of what we were doing, but the quality of the teachers and the people that were presenting. I've heard it for three weeks now. Would you videotape it? Would you take it? Would they, would you allow them to come to our district and do that?
For a price.
It was, yeah. Hey-
No, I don't think we can pay enough.
But I'm just saying. Would you videotape it? Would you take it? Would they, would you allow them to come to our district and do that?
For a price.
It was-
For a price.
Yeah.
No, I don't think we can pay enough.
But I'm just saying, I-
Too much going on.
We have this unbelievable staff in this district, and, and that's just evident, once again, that's being reinforced by other districts as they see that. So I, I just thought that was, I just want to say that publicly.
We need to vote to go into executive session, discuss personnel matters, as provided in Section 610021, 3 and 15, RSMO.
So moved.
Ms. Callen, Mrs. Twitty. Thank you all very much.